Courtney, I'm mute if you want to do your thing. Courtney, you want to take a roll call?
Yep. Right. Chairman McGee? Absent?
Here.
No.
McGee.
McGee.
I thought you said Gassen.
She said Gassen then.
Oh, did you? Oh, I'm sorry.
Or maybe it says absent.
That's right. I can start over. So Chairman McGee is absent. Vice Chairman Hauser?
Present.
Secretary Sage?
Absent.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Absent.
Gassen?
Absent.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
King?
Present.
Lord?
He's absent. Yeah.
Stone?
Here.
So just to recap, I have Lord, Clark Martin, Secretary Sage, and McGee that are absent.
Secretary Sage just terminated.
He's just coming in? Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a quorum. Thank you. All right, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number three, public comment. Anyone on the calls? Nope. Okay. We will move on to item number four, that is the approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 7, 2022.
So moved.
Okay. Anyone second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Gassen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item five. I understand 5A will not be heard tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Banda?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for the public watching too, not a good habit to get into apologizing at the beginning of every meeting. But we discovered through an email about the next item that someone said they hadn't got a notice, and they were within 300 feet, which I knew. So we looked into the records and, again, it's not an excuse, it's a mistake that we did not send notices out. We published everything in the paper properly, did it, and with Siana's absence, we didn't follow up and send out notices. So by law, we can't have this hearing tonight. So what we did is we let the petitioners know, and Pfizer was very gracious, and they're fine. We're looking at their billing plans already. There's not much change or discussion that's going to take place on that. So we're going to set that for April 21st. We'll do that. If we could, here, we would table this public hearing to April 21st. Same thing with the Forest Ridge public hearing that was scheduled, but because they had a lot of work done over the month with video, we thought we would talk about that one to see if there's any other information we'd want to share. A resident was frustrated with me that I sent out a, when I recapped last time what happened in the Forest Ridge request. She didn't like the way it was handled, the way I described it, I guess, and I apologized. It was, talked to a lot of people about Forest Ridge. There's been back and forth. I was trying to get her involved with Kate, and they have been, so that's that. But so technically, we need a motion to table till the 21st. Mr. Crot, would that be the right way to handle it?
Well, yes, you wouldn't actually, you wouldn't necessarily open the hearing, but you'd just, it'd move to the next hearing.
Right.
So this would just be discussion.
Right, so on the first one, we don't even discuss. We're just going to move it to the 21st. We've advertised it in the paper today, so we're covered for the 21st, which is a special meeting on Thursday, or the second meeting of the month on Thursday. So again, first item, we can now pass on.
Okay, so we'll pass on 5A, the public hearing on the Pfizer building. That'll be moved to the next meeting on April 21st, 2022.
Correct.
Okay?
Chairman, am I correct? Aren't we making a motion to the table?
Jeff, do we have, Jeff Crot, do we have to make a motion to do that?
No.
No, no, because you're not actually tabling anything because your, the public hearing will be at the next meeting.
Right.
And we'll say in the notice that we said it was scheduled for tonight, and it is postponed until the 21st. So we made it clear that we weren't having it tonight. So anybody that wants to talk in public next on the 21st will be able to do that.
Mr. Banda? Are we expected to keep these till next meeting?
Thank you for bringing that up. I would appreciate it if you would, so we don't have to ask the petitioners to resubmit.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so Commissioners, hang on to your packets as it, for the documents that you received relative to line item 5A. We'll discuss that on April 21st, 2022. And then I guess we'll move on to 5B right now, which is the site plan to construct 167 new carports at Forest Ridge Apartments. And I guess we'll open it up to the petitioner if they would like to talk and update us about the status of what's been happening. Is that fair?
It's fair. I might say it's on October 4th was our last week, so there's a lot of time passed. And there was a lot of concern from the Commission and Nvidia and the petitioners that worked together to try to allay a lot of those concerns. So I thought tonight would be a good time for you guys to get a understanding of what's been taking place. And Vidya, would you want the petitioner to go first, or you want to outline it, or whatever you want?
I can present a brief summary for the benefit of the Commission, and then the applicant can come up to the microphone and probably add to the information regarding the interaction with the next door neighbor. If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you may. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. You're all familiar with the Forest Ridge Carport, Apartments carport proposal to construct 167 carports. This project originally appeared before you for preliminary hearing on October the 4th of 2021. Since then, the applicant has made numerous changes, and then they reappeared before you on February 7th of this year, and they were scheduled for a public hearing that was supposed to take place tonight. However, it will take place on the 21st. Since the last time you saw this plan, the applicant did make certain changes to the project, which I shall summarize for you. I have the plan on the screen. I hope everybody can see it. Some of the concerns, the main concerns that we had in our previous letter, all of them have been addressed at this time, and I will summarize only those and not go over each individual item. The concern in Lot 1 was the dumpster enclosure. I had expressed a concern that even with the six-foot enclosure, the dumpster unit inside is still visible from the abutting streets. There was previously a recommendation made for Arbor Whitey, at which time Mr. Leader presented that Arbor Whitey constantly get eaten by the deer, and they would raise the height of the enclosure to eight feet to screen the units, which is acceptable and permitted under the ordinance. So that is a change the applicant is making. In Lot number three, the applicant was required to show the turn radius for fire and emergency vehicles to address a concern regarding turning around this corner, and the applicant has done that. So this lot is navigable. This particular access drive is being revised on Lot 4 in order to make it a two-way access drive, 24 feet wide, as required by the ordinance it will be. Although it says 20 feet here, that was, the plans were already printed. This will be 24 feet wide. This is a one-way drive aisle which will remain as is. The applicant did attempt to put some landscape islands into this Lot 4 parking lot. I am not seeing it. I'm not sure if what was included on the packet is the latest version of it, but they have attempted to put some landscape islands in this lot. The applicant had requested the planning commission to retain their wall-mounted light fixtures on this side of the building as is. They are not exactly downward-directed and shielded lights. However, they provide illumination only to the interior of the site for safety of the residents, since this is a heavily wooded area, and the applicant is aware that should there be any nuisance complaints with regard to the light spillage, they will change the fixtures. The biggest concern was with regard to Lot 2. Commissioner Gassen had brought up a concern regarding barrier-free accessible spaces in this particular lot. This plan that I'm finding as part of your packet that is online is not the latest plan, because on the newest plan the applicant submitted, there are barrier-free accessible spaces designated in every single parking lot. The applicant is providing more handicap accessible spaces than required for this whole site. In fact, the revised plan includes a total of 22 handicap accessible spaces, with the possibility of designating handicap accessible spaces even under the carport. So what you see on screen is not the latest. This is the February version of the plans. It is not the latest version that is actually dated March the 7th. However, it does show handicap accessible spaces in this lot, too. Since this plan was done, one of the biggest concerns that came to light is the next-door neighbor, who apparently was not in town at the time the original notices were sent, and had some concerns regarding the carports being located as proposed. Since the meeting, the applicant has had an opportunity to interact with the next-door neighbor, and on the latest version of the plan, these four carport units are gone. It's going to be open parking, because the homeowner wanted the carports pulled away from their dwelling. So only 18 of these 22 bays are actually carports. Four of these will be open spaces. There is an existing white picket fence located along here, which is entirely the applicant's fence located on the applicant's property. It will be replaced with a six-foot tall wooden screen fence along the property line to provide increased shielding for this homeowner. That is basically a summary of all the changes on the plan and addresses all of the concerns that are outstanding as of the February meeting. I believe since the plans were submitted to the city in the first week of March, the applicant has interacted with the homeowner. So I would defer to the applicant to provide a summary of that information for the Commission's benefit, and I'm not sure if the homeowner is present tonight at the meeting in person or on Zoom, and can probably address the concerns, too. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything for discussion?
I have a question. I have a question, because I thought last time that the not having more than 20 parking spots was like an absolute, that we have no kind of leeway around that. And so the way that it's drawn up, I see there's a couple landscape bays, landscape bays added. Then there's also additional handicap with, you know, kind of spaces in between or other areas that are maybe open walkways and cement in between. I guess, does that satisfy Vidya? What's your perspective?
Yes. Yes, that's a very good point, Commissioner King. The ordinance says that no more than 20 uninterrupted parking spaces in a single row. So the applicant is going by a technicality, which they can do, is they are breaking up the rows of 20 or more spaces by putting a break with a crosswalk in between. That technically meets the requirement of the ordinance, which is fine, because they are providing a lot of handicap accessible spaces. They went from nine handicap spaces to 22 handicap spaces. So they are overall improving the site's barrier-free accessibility and the parking lot. There aren't as many islands as would typically be required, but they are meeting the letter of the ordinance.
Vidya, this is Christian. I've got a quick question, because when I went through the drawings, I, for some reason, maybe I missed it, or I don't have the proper set here, but I don't see the islands on the drawings. Did anyone else?
There's in Lot 4.
Which number in the drawing?
I am on page C3.
So that's great. That's fine, man.
So in Lot 4, next to the numbers 11 and 7, there's two there. And then if you look right across from that one landscape bay, there's a nine-foot, like, walkway.
Yeah.
And another walkway further down. So I think that's what Vidya's referring to.
Right.
Those would, those would satisfy the ordinance.
Okay.
And then, again, throughout, there's a couple more instances like that.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Courtney. Okay. Yeah, please. Okay. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, yes, the petitioners, please. If you have any comments?
Oh, I think you guys know us all pretty well. I believe, like Vidya said, we have now been able to accomplish everything pretty much that you asked us to do. I don't know if there's any further explanation that we need to give you unless you want to ask us questions.
Sure. Do you want to offer them anything?
Yeah, just to add, we had some trip correspondence with the neighbor at 409 Second Street, and did come up with a couple agreements.
Kate, could you kindly speak in the microphone? You're not audible at all.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So we did make a few agreements with them. Our latest correspondence, we didn't really hear back, so we're assuming the latest version is okay. Happy to share those details if you're curious. Yeah. So they had concerns about drainage. So the carport is on our property, and there's about a five-foot space between where the new fence will be and the carport. And so we're pretty confident that the roof will drain onto our site, but despite that, we're going to do some drainage in the ground and add gutters as well. So they're, they seem to have you with that. They had some concerns about lighting, because of course, we're putting some lightings under the carport. We're going to make sure that we start it at the most southern, most part of the carport, obviously away from their home, and direct it more into our lot and into the space, so it's not spilling into their site. Hoping, of course, that the fence will also help with that, because the fence will be up about six feet high. The clearance of the carport is seven feet. But we also agreed to add a shield on there if we felt like it was still a problem, or if they did once it was up. And then, of course, the big change was shifting the carport down. They had that request, that it wasn't so close to their home. So we were able to figure out our snow removal purposes and maneuverability to our deliveries at our garage, which is at the south end of that lot, too, and we were able to make it work. So we were able to make some accommodations. I hope they're happy with it.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I'll say, I'll comment. Thanks so much for the effort that you put into making the adjustments necessary. I'm particularly thinking of the successful parking, so thank you for that. I think it'll be a better site due to that. The question I have is the potential barrier-free under the canopy. Could you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so, do you want to start?
Well, essentially, because these carports aren't your typical carports that have posts, two posts, one at the front, one at the back, every two spaces. It's a cantilever, one post in the front, and it probably supports four or eight spaces. So what we've done is we've looked at it and said, well, why can't we have barrier-free on the end? And take some of the additional space beyond the carport on the pavement and call that a barrier-free space. There's plenty of room width-wise to accommodate on every end of every structure. So if we have a request from a resident who lives there that needs a barrier-free space under the carport, we can accommodate it. I'm not, I don't want to hold them off initially as all barrier-free spaces. They will be made available if requested, and whoever parks in those spaces, whoever we assign those spaces to, we'll have an agreement with them that we can move them to another space if a request comes for a barrier-free space.
It's a wonderful solution, and I think the spirit of that law is accommodation. It sounds like that's what you're doing.
If the need arises and we get asked, we're required under law to provide reasonable accommodation in a lot of different areas of our business. So.
Thanks, Ken.
Any other comments?
Can we vote? Just kidding.
No. And I want to thank you very much. I know you've been back up here several times, and I know there's.
It was different. Everyone was wearing masks.
That's right. And I certainly appreciate the efforts and frankly, the expense that you have undertaken to hit the marks that we've been looking for, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So that being said, I think what we'll do is we'll probably see you back again on, what, April 21st? Okay, so we'll see you back on April 21st, and then probably take a vote on it then, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a very nice evening. Okay. Moving on, line item number six, considerations, and this is a continued discussion and adoption of the 2025 proposed master plan from Beckett and Rader, Inc. Young man, how are you?
Hello, Commissioners. Nice to see you all again.
You, too.
Nice to see you, too.
It's a pleasure. So we are here today to discuss final adoption of the master plan. City Council has asserted the authority for final adoption, so today you will just be recommending city council adoption by pass of care resolution. You should have all received an updated master plan in your packet today, as long as, as long as a matrix that outlines the changes that were requested the last meeting and how we've addressed those changes in the current version of the master plan.
Just clarification, Commissioner? So I didn't receive it with this packet, but intermittently between the last meeting and this meeting's packet, I did receive something. Is that what you're referring to? Okay. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so do you want to just, any discussion about the master plan? Is there anyone who wanted to make some comments about what was received? I have a explanation sheet and edits, requested body description and the page numbers. And sir, are these all consistent, correct, that I'm holding you? Exhibit one?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And there's been no subsequent changes to this since we spoke last?
There has not, no.
Okay. You're not being interrogated. I'm just asking. Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Any discussion then from the Commissioners? Okay, so are we ready to make a motion to approve the master plan to take it to the city council for approval there? Correct? Okay.
I make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion from.
For the Commission to send the master plan to city council for approval.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner King. Any support?
Support.
Okay, support by the Mr. Mayor. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Gassen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, no problem. See you next week for a final adoption of the master plan.
Thank you.
See you city council next week. Yes, okay. Moving on, miscellaneous, item number seven. Mr. Banda?
Yeah, my, so next, on the 21st, that was our second scheduled meeting of April. We plan on having two in May, if we need them. At this point, we would have the two public hearings, and then if you've been following at all, discussion at the city council, it's taken a bit of a waggle, but the community house, we've been discussing how to, what we approved at the planning commission, right? Site plan. And Blaine, you want me to keep going, or do you want to? Okay. So we bid the project out as exactly was approved by the planning commission. And unfortunately, the, we had, the city council authorized a, an expenditure of about $1.02 million. The bids came in at almost $3 million. It's not a surprise. We were surprised to have it be that high, obviously. Went back and worked with the contractors and Wing Construction, nothing to do with Mr. Wing. And AEW, remember, they partnered up, not as our city engineer, but as a partner to that project. And they went back and we tried rebidding it, and we came back with the same thing, a little bit higher, actually. So that wasn't going to work. So now the team of the city, the city administration and the community house folks are trying to go back and find another way to possibly do that. We've applied for a grant, or applying for a grant, two of them actually, that could cover the whole cost. That would be wonderful. If you remember rates, the dollars, a lot of the dollars, not all of them, about $750,000, I think, $1,000,000 were to be, coming out of the bond proceeds that we did for the administrative billing that came in on budget and got that all worked out, but it wasn't enough to get us over the top. But, um, and so if we got a grant, that's great. We have to spend the dollars that we have now pretty soon here, by the fall, unless we get an extension. So that's one route we're going. Second route would be, if that doesn't work out, it's our building. We still have an obligation to make sure and maintain that building. We know there's some leaks in the roof. There's a, not, there's a wish list and a want list. The want list really is new windows, siding on the whole building, new roof, and just gussy up the inside. That's under the $750,000. City council will make that decision later after we know where we're headed. So in the meantime, being proactive, the management of the community house, knowing that they're going to be disrupted on the inside one way or another, contracted to have a cement pad poured and a temporary tent put up so they could do things outside while they were working inside. And during COVID, city council given us the administrative right to do things like that. Ra-Ra, if you noticed, in the parking lot, there was a tent for dance. There was one at the dance studio. Some of the restaurants around town did tents. Can't use that excuse anymore. Not that everything's over, but we're not in that mode anymore. So we talked to community house and said, that structure's going to be there for more than a few months, so while they're doing it. So we felt that we should come to planning commission for a formal site plan review from the city. We're going to bring in elevations of the tent. They actually poured the pad, but they were informed now it has to be ADA compliant. So they're going to use the bathrooms inside the community house. So we want to make sure there's ADA compliance to get to that slab as long as it's there. So that's all going on right now. They're drawing the engineering plans. So on the 21st, we'll bring the preliminary site plan pretty rudimentary. It'll be an aerial, a picture of the tent. We'll make sure we work with the fire department to make sure it's all done properly, ADA compliance. And then at that meeting, to keep this going, because they want to start booking things early in May, then we would ask to have a public hearing set. So tonight, I'd like to ask to have the public hearing set for the May meeting. So that gives us enough time to advertise. We have to have 15 days. So even though you do not have a item in front of you, we don't, we can set the public hearing, but it'd be nice to have a motion that we know it's coming, and we would like to set that meeting for May 4th, I believe it is.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, support?
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Mark Gassen?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was made aware that there is a caller, it looks like, online, someone who wants to make a comment. Is that correct?
Looks like it, yep.
Okay.
So if 621, is that what that is, 651, would.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Jane Turner here.
Hi, how are you, Ms. Turner? Go ahead.
Fine. I, it's hard to time because you're on a delay. I'd like to make a public comment. Are we at that stage yet, or should I wait?
No, no, it's perfect timing. Go right ahead, please.
Okay. Can somebody give me a history lesson on zoning? Currently, the cemetery, yes?
I'm sorry, you said a history lesson on what issue?
Zoning.
Oh, zoning.
Zoning.
Oh, okay.
Okay, currently, the cemetery is R1, which means one-family residential. Now, number one, who can zone the cemetery as anything but a public property? And number two, if you're going to zone it, you can't do an R1 because it's a multi-family residence. And I don't think the lot size meets the criteria.
Okay, well, I don't have an answer for you. I would say that maybe the answer ought to be from the zoning board.
Actually, from Vidya could.
Or Vidya, actually, maybe. If Vidya, if you have any insight, don't guess.
I'll have to look into what Ms. Turner said. She mentioned the cemetery. I'm actually opening up the ordinance, and I'm trying to look at it, and I will have an answer for her through Nick.
Okay.
Okay, and the other thing is, is that the park is zoned R2. We have churches that are zoned R1. And the school is zoned R1. I would like to know when this actually happened, and who in, who in their right mind would be zoning a cemetery?
Okay, I want to clarify one thing. The zoning is not for the use. The zoning is for the land. The church is not zoned R1. It is the land that is zoned R1, and the church is permitted on it under a federal act, Lupa, which says that anywhere where you permit single-family residential uses or multiple-family residential uses, you must permit religious institutions, too. So the use is not zoned. It's not the cemetery that is zoned residential. It is the land that is zoned residential, and then zoning sets forth the list of uses that can be permitted on the underlying zoning. I see Attorney Crot is also on here, if he would like to add to something that I said. I see Attorney Kratt is also on here if he would like to add to something that I said. Attorney Kratt?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I was just, while Vidya was talking, I did look at the residential zoning and for section 603, special exception uses, in residential allows for churches as well as cemeteries. So it is, those are specifically...
And the school?
Yes, elementary, intermediate, high, senior high school, yes.
And then you've got the Lutheran church as a multi-family.
It's not the church, once again, that is zoned multiple family. It's the land. So churches are permitted even in multiple-family zoned parcels as a special or special exception use that we call it here or a special land use. So there are numerous districts in which churches would be permitted or any place of religious worship, just like schools. It's the land that is zoned, not the use itself.
I still don't understand this cemetery. That doesn't make any sense.
I'll definitely try to get you some more information, Ms. Turner, which might hopefully provide some more clarity on how that whole zoning versus the actual land use that is placed on it works.
And why does every have, every property in the city have to be zoned?
Why does property have to be zoned? Because zoning provides for planned and controlled land use and development. Without zoning, you cannot develop a property. You would have incompatible land uses next to one another. Without zoning, you would not have planned or controlled development. You might end up having an industrial use right next to a school without the zoning. That's the whole point of zoning that is established under the Planning and Aging Act and the Zoning and Aging Act. It helps you plan for the development of a community so that land uses next to each other are compatible, both physically and economically.
Okay, so explain to me what would go on if the school was sold?
If the school was sold, the next use that comes onto the property would have to be a use that is permitted in the district that the land is zoned. If it's zoned as multiple-family residential, then it has to be one of the uses that are principal permitted uses, or it has to be one of the conditional land uses that are permitted in the MR district. It does not have to be another school.
So you're telling me they could tear down the school and build as many houses in there as they can?
If it's within the permitted density under the zoning district, yes, they can. The school is just a use that is allowed in the zoning district. It's not the zoning of the land. The land is not zoned school. The land is zoned multiple-family residential or single-family residential.
No, it's single-family, but that's okay.
Okay, yeah. Whatever is the underlying zoning designation is what I mean.
I don't understand how this happened. I still don't understand it after you explained, and it makes absolutely no sense that the cemetery and the park is not zoned multiple, or not zoned city-owned.
It is, zoning is complicated. I will try my best to provide some information through Nick that will help explain why zoning and planning work the way they do. I'd be happy.
And how come we have so many R1-family residences, one through five? And I asked, no one can define it.
Because each R district is defined by the size of the lot. R1 and R2 have different lot width and lot depth requirements and total lot area versus R5, which are much larger lots. And the reason for creating all those lots is the underlying history of when the plaque was established. The R1 and R2 parcels are really small. They are around 5,500 square feet because most are 50 by 110 or around that dimension, whereas the R5 parcels are much larger. They are 10,000 square feet plus. So you set up different R districts to allow for different size dwelling units. If you have only one R district across the board, you would have the same size dwelling permitted on the smallest and the largest lot, or you would end up making a whole bunch of homes non-conform, which means they don't meet what the district requirement is. One size does not fit all, which is why we have multiple R districts.
Okay. That's the best explanation I have, but I still don't understand the cemetery.
I will definitely try and get you some answer that seems a little bit more explanatory for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Anyone else on the line? Okay.
I have something for miscellaneous.
Yes.
I saw recently that, I believe, the city had applied for a grant for the playground in the park, and it was approved, I believe, or we were awarded it. Are there any updates on that project or will we be seeing that?
Technically, you won't be seeing it because there's not a structure. But yeah, we were awarded between two grants, like 1.2 million dollars in all abilities. Park is, it's really beautiful. It's going to be up kind of, you know where the GBB building is, or the, I'm sorry, the big bathrooms? Yeah, in the GBB, there's Memorial Grove.
Yep.
If you will, and the parking lot that comes off of Woodward, that kind of serves the baseball fields and the Memorial Grove. So right at the terminus of that, as you come into the park, is the area. There's a little burn there right now. So if all goes right and prices hold here, we're hoping that we can see a late fall destruction, most likely in the spring.
Mr. Wing?
So Blaine Wing, city manager. What we're anticipating is potentially a groundbreaking this fall, so we definitely can, once we have the plans. There's some irrigation issues, some parking and some other things. I would like to say it's 1.2, but it's about a million. So we got just under 800,000 and then 225 at this point. We've applied for two other grants that if we get all of the other two that are still outstanding, we'd get up to the 1.2. So just to clarify. But we'd be happy to bring some plans here, but at this point, there wouldn't be anything that's a request as there's not a structure.
Okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Glad to share that.
Yeah, happy to share it. And then most likely, it'll probably end up in one of our newsletters as well, just so that...
We're very happy. That was, it's a great project.
Yeah. Well, I imagine others in, you know, the community as a whole will want to see. So I just, I didn't know if anything needed our approval since we looked at that initially for the grant.
Not, not at this point.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Any other comments by the commissioners?
I just make one comment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
When the, when the school thing comes before this board?
Yes.
We will, we will see the largest crowd because everybody's starting to focus on, okay, it's going to get sold, it's going to come to the planning commission.
Right.
So just everybody needs to be aware that that's coming.
And I agree with you. And I've watched the city council meetings and the resolution that was presented, and it's certainly an issue that lots of people have lots of different feelings about. And I think, Vidya, your analysis today about zoning and it attaches to the land, not necessarily the use, I think is going to be critical for all of us to be very familiar with how that works. So when those issues are presented to us as a, as a board, as a commission, we understand how it works because if we're charged with making that decision, it's imperative that all of us have a fundamental knowledge as to the process. So we make sure that we're doing what is proper under the zoning, under the rules, et cetera, okay? But you're right, we'll be, all eyes will be on the commission.
And I haven't heard anything. It was March 28th was the date, so there's been no, no news, but the school board hasn't exactly been forthcoming with...
Right.
...information either.
Yes, sir.
I haven't heard any official news, but I've heard there's multiple...
Yes, I've heard that as well.
Okay.
One particularly interesting.
Yes. Says Mr. Gassen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Vidya, go ahead.
Recently, on March 15th, I was the instructor for the Michigan Association of Plannings Spring Training Institute. I conducted a seminar for all planning officials in Michigan on the role and responsibilities of the zoning board of appeals. But I started off the presentation with a short training on what exactly is planning and zoning? What is the difference between a zoning ordinance and a master plan? How one leads to the other? It is, it's a basic fundamental course in why we do planning, what is the statutory authority in the state of Michigan that grants us powers to do planning, and what is the role and responsibility of the planning commission? It's a very good refresher course. It can be a presentation. I think if you, if you believe that there are certain hot topic projects that might be coming before the city or certain pressures, it might be helpful for me to do a presentation of sorts for the benefit of the planning commission and the residents so they understand exactly where the fundamentals are. So because quite often there is confusion, people say zoning says this, but the master plan says this. The two are completely different. Master plan is the vision, zoning is the law. Why we do what we do. It's really a helpful refresher in planning, which is fundamental to understand before people get, you know, concerned about what's going on. So definitely, this is something that the board will have to discuss with the city manager. And if you would like me to do a refresher course for you, which I'll keep it brief, maybe in 45 minutes to an hour presentation, go over it and answer questions for you. I would be happy to do that.
Well, I can only speak for myself, and I'll certainly ask the commissioners, but I think maybe that's something that we would do in conjunction with maybe even city council, you know, and rather you give that twice. I have to believe that city council would probably benefit as well from that. So if you were to come in and talk to us, maybe we could do it on an off day or at Nick's house on a Friday night and go over this and have a seminar on zoning law, I would be more than happy.
Of course.
Yeah. But no, I'm being very serious.